Okay, so that will be number eight. Have a motion to accept it.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we've come to the weirdest part of our meeting, folks online.
See ya.
We're gonna go take a stroll over to the elementary school and take a tour, and then we'll be back. Go please. Alright, ready? I think we were adding one thing to the agenda.
You are, yeah. There's a suggestion to amend to include after public comment, information about the well, because we had had that tested for the two working wells.
BMS well update?
Yep.
Okay, so that will be number eight. Have a motion to accept it.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we've come to the weirdest part of our meeting, folks online.
See ya.
We're gonna go take a stroll over to the elementary school and take a tour, and then we'll be back. Go please. Alright, ready? Created over the summer to assist students, and it's great that OT is now physically back in the building and children aren't traversing the parking lot. So, we'll continue on. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, seeing as we have no select board member here, we'll carry on to public comments. We have no public here. Anyone online wanna chat? Hand up. Okay, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. Okay, BMS well update.
Here we go. So, at the last board meeting, we had second wind come and talk about testing two wells. We had to shut down, not shut it down, but kinda take it offline right now. The results of the two wells is that our arsenic level is .0036. The state requirement is .0050. So at this point, there is not a recommendation to move forward with any remediation for those wells because we are well below that data point that we need to be, but we will continue to monitor it. It is far cheaper to do that at this point, and if it continues to increase, then we'll have to look at it at that point, but we do have safe drinking water here in Barrington.
And we had been running at .0046 or something like that.
Yeah, it's been hovering around.
Yeah, and so we're down well below where we've been running historically.
Yeah, with those two wells mixed.
Great.
So, it will be monitored closely, but we can drink the water.
And if I recall, by monitoring that third well, we can keep it open and therefore do remediation somewhere down the line if need be, rather than having to go through all the permitting again for a new well. Great, that's awesome.
It sounds like there's no water supply issue just being on two wells versus three.
No, we have plenty of water with the two wells.
All good?
No more water fountains, unfortunately. Problem solved.
Right.
Alright, well, that's good news. Alright, so we are up to correspondence.
Yes, so due to it being a personnel matter, I'm not gonna read the letter. You guys all have the letter in front of you. We do have a staff member that unfortunately, due to unforeseen family circumstances, is requesting a one-year leave of absence. She is a fourth grade teacher. There are plans in place with certified educators to fill that role. But at this point, because the deadline per their CBA is March 1st to put in for these, it's kind of one of those tricky things where it was unforeseen and she just feels like she needs more time. So, we are requesting approval from the board, or any questions you may have for her.
Make a motion if nobody has a discussion, so I'll make a motion to approve the fourth grade one-year leave of absence.
Second.
The only discussion I'd like to add is we need to just note for the association that this is not precedent-setting. This is a one-off. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, principals, you guys draw straws. Who's gonna go first?
Do you wanna go oldest to youngest, or youngest to oldest?
Clockwork, scissors, or scissors.
I guess it does list you first, so.
Yeah. You just want like enrollment and how the year is launched.
Yeah, the big three days that you've had with them.
Yeah, it's been a really smooth start. I think one of the better starts that I've experienced with the ECLC. I feel like just sort of the parents have done a great job preparing the kids, and the kids look really ready to roll. So it's been fun going in all the rooms and just seeing sort of everybody busy doing their work of playing and learning routines and procedures. That was my message to the staff. Her first staff meeting was really about the first six weeks and sort of along with the code of conduct, right? In our building, the first six weeks really is to teach the expected behaviors, the routines, procedures, do a lot of interactive modeling so students know what is expected of them before, you know, anything else, because you can't intervene if you haven't taught them what they ought to be doing. So, it's been great. Arrival's been smooth. Even with the construction, like this morning, we had, we're digging a big hole at the rec, and there's a fence up there, but that's all, they're great. I just go over in the morning and say hi to them and just tell them, you know, today said there'll be more cars coming through, but within half an hour, it'll all be over. And so dismissal's been good as well. The only hiccup has been small buses. Bridget's been working with that company, but there've been quite a few issues in that realm. But that's really been it.
And what's the enrollment?
I have eighty-four K and I have fifty-four preschoolers.
How are them numbers relative, excuse me, how are them numbers relative to the last previous two or three years?
So last year, we started with eighty-nine, and this year we're eighty-four, so there's a drop. Prior to that, it's always been about a hundred kids.
So odd.
Preschool, last year we started with forty-nine, this year we're starting with fifty-four. So.
Of the fifty-four, how many?
And I have two openings, I have two openings in preschool, which is really, for the tuition-paying students, which is really unusual.
Of the fifty-four, how many are tuition-paying students?
Hang on, I have a chart for that. Do some math, fifty-four minus fifteen.
For a time.
Thank you.
We do have, we got quite a few referrals over the summer, so we have four students in process. So, you know, that will add those four. And then we have, I think we have three child find screenings coming up as well, so.
Sounds like a good start.
Finding us, yeah.
Before we move on, I know you guys have, I didn't realize that they were digging up the parking lot up there. Were we well aware of that? Like, I didn't know.
Yeah, Jesse's been great.
Jesse's awesome.
She's been communicating. We, I mean, I went over there, invited me over there in July, and literally, like, she had this map and this whole outline of when was happening what, and she was like, the fence is gonna be here, and she had like an X, a red X. She's like, and then on this date, they're gonna move the fence eighteen inches to this blue X, and then on this date, so. Yeah, so she's on it. I mean, they were supposed to pave the parking lot Friday, but the weather happened. So, I mean, that's just, but, no, it's been, and even this morning, when I was out, because I stand kind of right where the traffic comes in in the morning, just to help parents learn the routine, and she was, she was right there. She also has two twins that started kindergarten, so it's quite convenient that she, like, will drop off. But she's been there. The police have stopped by a couple of times to check in, you know, they're driving by, so it's good.
Good to love Barrington.
Good.
Yeah.
I would say similarly at elementary school, we have, the first three days have gone smooth in a lot of ways. Just kind of start with enrollment-wise, our total number is at three ninety-four. Kind of proactively, Rick, that's about fifteen students less than where we were at last year at this time. I think we were at like four oh nine for most of the year. There was, the current fourth grade class is a good twenty to twenty-five students more than any of the other classes, so there's definitely that level of the class going through. I think from like operations standpoint, we definitely had some changes this year. So first, just our start and end times kind of changed significantly. We've kind of shrunk our arrival time to just a ten-minute window. And sure enough, with a little pushing from Deanna and Bridget, the bus company has gotten nine buses running, and we have like all nine buses showing up within that ten-minute window, so the kids are all getting here. Typical first sort of week, two weeks, the parent drop-off line in the morning is a little slow-going as we get, you know, kids and parents into the routine of how to quickly move through the car line. And we'll just put a little public service, I know that we just put it out in like Facebook, and we'll just put it in the newsletter. So especially in the, during that drop-off, in the pickup time in the afternoon, we have heard that the parent line is actually blocking the entrance and exit from Jackie's, the new restaurant there.
Uh-oh.
So we just wanted to put out to parents just to be mindful of not actually blocking the entry and exit, just leave a space so that we can make sure that their staff and their customers can get in and out. But otherwise, it has gone very But otherwise, it has gone very smoothly. Similarly dismissal, which if you can recall in the past has been sort of a frustrating time where we've taken 25, 30 minutes to go through the dismissal process between when we were dismissing and when buses were actually available, so we sort of adjusted the time. We are now dismissing at 3:15 and while we're still working through the car rider to get faster, which that is a normal thing because right now we're checking everybody's, right until we know who they are, we're checking IDs and it just takes longer. But again, all nine buses, I think that we have it within about seven to eight minutes that we have gotten all the bussers loaded and are like on their way out. I know they're coming up to the ECLC as well, so we have less kids transferring back and forth. Just that whole part of like getting and leaving school, which believe it or not, like has a pretty significant impact on what's happening in the building, has gone really quite well so far. In terms of in the building, the kids have been great. You know, it's similar to, as Laura said, especially in the first and second grade, you know, it gets a little bit less as they get older, but there's still so much time is necessary in the very beginning of the year to take the time to teach the rules and routines and expectations, slowly work into beginning to get into curriculum. The reading team will start next week doing some of their sort of beginning of the year assessments from that standpoint. We'll really dive into our master schedule, which also has changed significantly this year with regard to how much time we're sort of allotting for, in particular literacy, on a daily basis. And I just, I think that'll be really helpful and good for our students and staff, but overall, it's just been a really great start. Great first three days. I'm really excited by the energy. There is a lot of energy in the building, but I think I was saying in the garden, by 3:15, kids and staff alike are, they are pretty exhausted by the day ends, but in a good way.
All right, BMS also has had a pretty smooth, calm first three days of school, which has been nice. Our enrollment has dropped over the last week when I wrote this report originally. So originally last week, we had 115 fifth graders. We're now at 112. Sixth grade went from 100 last week to 96. Seventh grade went from 109 to 106 and eighth grade went from 100 to 97. So just within the last week, we've had a few people go to the charter school, homeschool and some people just move districts. So our total enrollment is 411, which is up from this, I think that's up from sixth last year. But interesting in the last week that the enrollment has gone down. We had our welcome back, our welcome night for fifth grade families last week and we had huge attendance. That fifth grade pod and cafeteria were just like staff, like stuffed to the brim, so that was good to see. We're happy to see all those families because that transition we've been working on this summer. Sports, athletic teams started their first practices and tryouts today, so that was great to see so many kiddos after school heading up to the fields or heading out to the cross-country track. But overall, yeah, it's been pretty smooth. We started working on code of conduct posters and messaging and advisory this morning, so we're going to be messaging that among teams over the next few weeks. And the biggest win is we have not had one single phone issue in the first three days of school, so we'll see if that sticks, but right now it's looking positive.
Excellent.
And we can drink the water, yes.
And we can drink the water.
Okay, so our policies.
So these policies that are listed are all just for second read. There have been no changes to them, so. Just ready to.
Moving up to do the alphabet soon.
I'll make a motion to approve policies FEH, GBCD-RG1, GBJI, JICFA and JICK for second read.
Hey, any discussion?
And for those online, you know, we did approve for emergency implementation some policies. Our policy committee hasn't yet met to read, review those, so they will be coming back up for the board to review and vote on again, but in case people are curious.
We have our meetings on Thursday.
Yep.
Do a vote on that.
No, it's just a update in case people wonder.
No, we didn't. We didn't vote on the second read.
Oh, sorry, yes, we do. Okay, all those in favor of approving those for a second read?
Aye.
Sorry about that.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, so we're back up at our second opportunity for public comment. Anyone online want to speak?
Anyone here? You? No, nothing? You guys? Nothing? Okay. Now will be the time.
Seeing as no public comment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
No. I value these times together.
All right, well thank you for those of you online. Thank you principals. Glad it's off to a smooth start.
Good off, that's awesome. Did you say this is one of your best starts of memory?
We would have been done five minutes earlier if God would have kept up over at the school, if you would have just stayed with the group.
I'd leave Sarah with a note.